For 13th, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I should have asked you guys if you have any questions, but... Any questions? All good? Alright. Alright, motion carries. Treasurer's Report. Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's Report for the month of October 2019, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Kami for the superintendent report. Oh, yes, before I do that, Assemblywoman Griffith is here with us. Thank you for coming. I know we will be taking... I think she... Oh, yes, would you like to come up and present? Is there a mic right there, actually? Should be on... Yep?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Assemblywoman Judy Griffin. And I'm honored to be here tonight to present Mary Jo O'Hagan with words of citation recognizing all of her dedication and commitment to the Baldwin School. Citation I have is from Senator Chris B. and myself. So on behalf of the North State Senate and North State Assembly, we wanted to present you with this citation for your outstanding work in the district. In reading about you, I couldn't believe you, you know, 36 years of active service in the district, and 25 years as a school board officer. That's a lot of dedication to the district. And I'm sure the district is very lucky to have you all of these years. And thank you for all of your work and dedication to everyone, because it's a big job. So I know that you've got this recognition a couple months ago in board meetings with Senator Chris B. and I here today. So we're here tonight, and this is a distinguished award, right? It's the Everett R. Dyer Award, and it's a high school unique. So, congratulations. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Assemblywoman. I appreciate it.
Before you leave, Assemblywoman, before you leave, I just want, on behalf of the Baldwin School District, I want to thank you for your generous gift of $50,000 to our school for improvements that we will be making most likely up at the high school. So, thank you.
I'm happy to do it, and I'm excited to hear what you decide to do with that. And that's excellent. And Senator Chris B. and I, we work as a team, so all of the funds that we get for each district comes from both of us. So on behalf of both of us, we thank you, and we're always out there to see what we can, how we can help all of them. Because you really have such an impressive school district that you think that no one else is doing it. It's really nice to see that.
Harold, did you get that? That's a really good quote. We like that one.
So, thank you for all of you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm still...
Yes.
Your honor. Anthony, I'm just gonna zip in.
So, good evening, everyone. We have rolled out Invasion 2020. And over the last month and a half, we have been getting input from our community around the proposal that we set out there, the idea that we had to change the two same areas. We changed from our ability to incorporate through the five, every five years, and changed from two things to four towards 2016. Based on all that information, we've exploited some ideas from the community to help the community develop that, to become a more aware society. And I wanted to share tonight with the results of that more, because based on all the results, we will then want to write a new plan, a proposed plan, that we'll then share with the community and will be going on by the community on our 16th of January. So, in our thought exchange, we've had 33,470 people participate. There were 452 draws and over 10,000 ratings. This is our test. So on this chart, it's the demographics, and what we were able to do is, based on who you were in community, whether you were a staff member, are you a parent? Are you part of Lennox School? Are you part of Schubert, Baldwin High School at Schubert? Based on that information, we were able to disavowate some of the data. But you can see that there was really good representation from across the community. And so some major themes came out. The highest number of comments and the highest number of star ratings came through customer recommendations. Eric has been in the elementary school, the middle school, and high school, because it's top. So you can see that these are the six of the particular comments that were the non-thought-exchange. But you can see that there was a 4.4 or 4.3 average star, four of the least of those Eric's comments. And that was very consistent across all of the comments that people wrote for Eric. So it seems that the communities are considered very high on that. Another theme that came out were bathrooms, the desire for new bathrooms, remodeled bathrooms. You can see 4.5, 4.5, 4.3, 4.2 stars. And so there were many comments about bathrooms, and it generally was between somewhere between 4 and 5 stars. Another theme that came out was performing arts. The real desire to do something significant for our students, for our really offline performing arts students. And you could see a nicer auditorium, updated auditorium, dedicated orchestra space, new auditoriums at the high school and middle school. And again, those ratings were anywhere between 4.0 and 4.2. So again, very high on the desire of... Another theme was athletic facilities. And this went from longer to curfew to new traps. And again, highly rated from a new particular one, 3.5, all the way up to 12.2. A lot of people talk about classrooms. They talk about community in bathrooms or open air purpose spaces for our elementary schools. They talk about flexibility, and they talk about upgrading the spaces so that we don't assume that the kind of facilities that we have is really what on the larger scale. Cafeterias, this is one more big theme involving there's widespread consent among elementary parents and teachers that they're looking for better facilities in elementary schools and their community space there. So in this kitchen cafeteria, elementary school, and better cafeterias. There was also a desire for better cafeteria space at school. Another major theme was the library media center at the high school. And so looking at updating it, you can see on the top right, the high school library needs to be updated for reflective spaces are creating a community that's not simply outdated and much demodernized. So you can see also their ratings in the, you know, including the center about 3.7, but the other three or four is in the bars. But you see on the right, interesting numbers, the top bar is a five, and the four is a two, and the one is a seven. So you can see that the people that go from Texas to Alamo, or the four, the two, the four, they can go to the front. You will all be a student in the entire community will be a student in the water and the now that everybody's too new to the information nights. And they are Tuesday, January 21st, and Tuesday, March 3rd. With so the board will need a shift at both of those meetings, not only the projects, the coffee projects, all that kind of stuff. And in addition to those nights, there will be students in the civic institutions, the chamber, the CBA, new unit, there's a meeting, a new agenda. Because we really want to support the community throughout the time that the private sector is involved. In addition to that, on the wire, there will be a Baldwin Youth Association associated to Invasion 2020. But we can keep updated on the projects all the time on our website. You will see that Invasion 2020 is a snapshot of the company's website. If you click on that, it will bring you to the page where the information will constantly be updated. When you click it, you go to this page, and you will see whatever information you want to find. The left-hand side is all the information. So stay in touch with us, stay connected. Go to our website, go on Twitter, and Instagram as well. But there's a lot of current information that will come to your website. Again, if you keep that wire, if you keep the information, there will be community participation between now and March. And the goal basis of going to the body on the... And the hard goal here is to take this information and input of our community, trying to help the people for our community, both schools, in our community, and share that openly and honestly with the community. Ultimately, we're building, both yes and both no, both new ways. But what we're really proposing, I was telling them that in January, what we're really proposing is to try what we personally do, what we know, the God, the... Mr. Manella is going to present about our academic academy. So as he's coming up, Ashel Kwan, who's a principal at the high school, he has a big announcement, so just imagine that his curtain going off and his drums, you know, a drum roll. I could make you do the drum roll, but I can tell by the looks of your face, you're not gonna get a lot of participation. But so what we are introducing tonight is a seventh academy that will start in September, and that is on fire until September 19th. Details about that is already included in this presentation, but this is our seventh academy.
Good evening, Board of Education, faculty members. Tonight gives us great pleasure to introduce information about our signature Academy Academy program. Joined tonight by Ashel Kwan, who's a principal. And one of her many vulnerabilities is to help oversee this program. So you can see a lot of information on the slide, which we hope to come to on the website. We're not gonna read everything line by line, but we'll do a little bit of introduction to the video program. So first of all, I just want to introduce a little bit about the academy program, for those of you who do not know. The Academy Academies provide personalized learning environment for students who have the opportunity to select, self-select, the area of interest that they want to focus on. This area of interest will help lead them to a decision about whether this is an opportunity to deal, to teach a field, coursework that they want to pursue post-graduating. So they've got great real-life applications to get out into the field, they're graduating, so they're dynamic environment, they're now U-Rich. And you will hear a lot today about how each academy, when we design them, are designed on group pillars, rigorous, hierarchical coursework, partnerships that will allow students to have some unique experiences, Saturdays and friendships, so they could really live in that world of work and seek to be successful, as well as competitions and that's what our business is doing. Do that, and you can graduate too. It's fine, we choose the first academy.
So, I'm excited about presenting to global business academies, because of all the diversity of our virtual academy. So I really look to see the breathing out every day of the effort that business academies is making with our students. So far, global business and ops community of academies, these are our students who are interested in everything that's been shared, that is, the marketing, that is, the business of our community, that they... We talk particularly openly all the time. And we start with, we talk about getting a job, and we talk about, and you have to study how they're gonna own a company, and that sort of thing, that we had with the academy. We talk about personal finance, and we talk about, you know, anything that happens with the teamwork. And we kind of direct it that one, if there are students who weren't given the right courses, that as you see, 90% of the lessons felt great, there are elective courses that do your choice because they're in and you choose to be in a society. What happens is that there are also courses, you see on the right, there are courses that seem to also fit the company's schedule that will support and expand any of the elective courses that they're taking. And you'll see that as they're going to be upgraded, whether they're in a college or a courses, there is an opportunity to receive our credit at any moment, that you're going to experience, so that if you decide to go to one of the universities that you're old to go, or you have that type. And when they're working with these universities, they're also contacting them, lots of business competitors who are also part of the business world, and they really give them a good experience. And if you take a look, virtual enterprises are senior BSA. Basically, if you really want to come and just Google and see what's going on, our students run their own virtual companies. We have, like, companies called Surprise. I don't know if you know, if you want to... So Surprise is a virtual company. We have CEO-based companies, students, for students. We have a marketing team, we have tables, we have only, we only 45 companies, whatever the companies you just have in those types of companies, that's what we have in Surprise. And our students run these virtual companies. They go to, as normal as another competition, they need to see other services to have their virtual enterprise companies. And they compete, they work on modeling, we have our computer graphics course, we can dance there, and they work together with the computer graphics. We do all the logos, we do all the modeling, interior, commercial, posters. And so they work together, so there are courses that come together that make this happen. These are our students right here, who run these companies and compete, and made them very, very successful. So this is really something. So we talk about in the leadership department, what is it still that you do really want company? And no matter which courses you play, are always a critical goal, is to build those skills, those independent skills, so that they are able to be successful in a course like this, or a student center, who don't want to succeed in a company.
Just to add one other component, the courses that, when you look at the red, the courses, let's go back to previous slide, in red, those are required elective courses. So on top of their regular residence requirements that is used to fill, they're taking these courses in red as their required elective. Then if they have space in their schedule, like Ashel Kwan said, they could take any one of those other courses on the gray side.
So one other aspect is NAC. NAC is a program out of, it's an extra layer for our business academy students, where they are introducing a NAC certification at the end of the senior year, that continues to be our coursework. And what happens is when they graduate and show that those who are NAC certified, their licenses are flagged because they're not certified. And there is a network of hundreds and hundreds of business people out there who will kind of become sort of a debt累累 student, and who own companies, own companies all over the world. The business is around, so, and drive, where it's really the national, international NAC organization, where they're really trying to see all the partnerships and to build a network. But it's true, so that when our students graduate, and they're on their resume, and they're starting to be in the NAC institution, it's really a good opportunity to be in the world, the world. So our next academy is our government and law academy. So I went to the middle school on fire, and I experienced the academy because it was totally started, and one of the things is, well, I'm pretty sure argument is like, yes. Really? And so, well, I just agree, because you have this amazing talent for argument, so then maybe you could want to join the law academy. So, for the law academy, our student, our students are interested in the law field, politics, criminal justice, and there is a key network, the medical department, the medical department teaches these courses. And if you take a look, we even have senior year, college level criminal justice. So there is this, the college, and the college, and the school, with a CSI kind of something, which is so cool, so it may be doing together with my... You know, only doing the law field in its greatest way. And that's sort of the reason the academy, which are not only their focus, but they're also the way to kind of learn how. There are so many students who are like, they're in the law academy, but are interested in the medical field. And so there's this way of connecting the science and the law aspects of students to be, and giving them the opportunities.
So the Mental Health Science Academy might be one of the more popular academies. Anyone who's interested in pursuing a medical field, they should go to this academy. And what's great about this academy is it provides students with necessary skills to be successful when they want to go to college and be a PME major. A lot of our partners, local health, allow our students to come in at Saturdays, and one student, a few years ago, through a Saturday, was now employed through the childhood experience by local health as a student of PME. So it's also providing students opportunity to seek professions and get jobs right away after college. So this, again, this academy, students who are interested in any particular field of the medical profession, they start by taking Allied Health, EMT, emergency medical training, medical technology, and radiations, are two different courses. And that is the job, and once again, it's coupled with those courses are strength, very rigorous event-based classes, which will hopefully launch them into like a sophomore year experience, what they didn't have for this type of, you know, program.
Mr. Manella, so I showed this piece to anybody who's in eighth grade, for the medical academy, and they really think this is a good place. And they think it's a, it's like a lab, or like hospital, or like some, some medical thing, you know, like, you know, it's just going to be, you know, a hospital. And they're completely shocked, so they see, you know, the fact that our classrooms also support this type of experience, and on top of that, allowing them to have this outside field, this outside of the classroom, and it's like, that would kind of mean a lot to them.
STEM engineer academies, also great avenues for students to select, different engineering or STEM engine field in general. Students work on necessary inquiry-based learning experiences. One of the biggest things for this particular academy is the robotics club, as well as going to see hospitals to be in the first robotics competition. Dr. Allen had participated in that program last year, and our students are filled with other schools, students from Pakistan, China, across Long Island, and they're competing against not only students on Long Island, but nationally. It's one experience for them, as they embark and engage in that area. Many of the students, when you speak to them, through their coursework experiences, are truly laser-focused coming from engineering. So when you speak to them, they always say how, if it wasn't for the academy program, they wouldn't have known that they really wanted to pursue this field, and they buy a bunch of time in college, trying to decide what they want to do. But because of this, they know what they want to do, and they're going to college and graduating in four years or less. So we always look at that college decision as important for us. Once again, you see the mandatory courses, and the college-level courses, College of Robotics, CAD, College of Hearing, College of Architecture. And next year, new, we are introducing a coding class, Coding 1, to complement this academy, as well as the introduction to robot drones. We're very excited about these two courses to be brought into this area. The course, introduction to robot drones, will end in a certification, at a certification type to last two, you certify, excuse me, certified supply for drones. And therefore, I use a high school for the career. And we're hoping to build upon that, because the drones are gonna be getting, put cameras on them, so we could tie into the media, they could do video production. So this class, we're very excited about this new class.
So, as a perfect segue to our new media academy, I was checking out, I'm using a video, studio, in a studio, and I was trying to go, go action, you know, to have, to do much kind of them, they're still talking. So, always coming out there are new media academies, students who are interested in digital production, that everybody has often been seeing. You know, they really tap out a lot of different games, even unlike in other colleges, when something, the video, or somebody wants to be interested in a company, they probably want to see, even with video people, if you want to go in. There's even a life program, and we're so happy about the goal now, and the great things have, you know, they're actually really, you know, like, they used to be an editor, and it's really running around, and really getting the students in high school, they're second openly, and video students, they're like, up to patching, and it's just, oh, it's a lot of fun. And so, there really is a lot of, just sort of, the student, you know, they like to be out there, like, you know, to be, you know, look at things, look at your stuff. So if you look at, you know, elective courses, where we go from video production, and we even had, if you're looking, you know, AC1 and competition, so we're really telling how the academy can do for, for our, the new academy. The education academy is really, we're continuing to build our education academy. Why not have an education academy? They're all, they're for education for students. So what we have here is, we revamp our education academy for this, which makes the interesting topics, learning, the education field, anything that's charged here. And if you, even if you're going into psychology or, or developing, it's both through the academy. If you look at the electives, we have everything from those contemporary topics of education all the way to the civil issues that we see in modelled education. We give our students the opportunity to come up with suggestions, to talk to the lawmakers that we have in our system. What is awesome, what's here is that our students can play, where we do what we want to work on our website, students can be social, and just a little bit, and really watch this , students feel that everybody's running in their passion, and feeling that passion is very, very strong, and we'll be interacting with our website people. Everybody, everybody is tired of that. So we're finally asking, we should bring in a student, ask them to have some, really, I remember when I was a student, the students, they were really tough, and knew this is what I wanted to do. And so we're giving the happiness to them.
Just add one more thing about the Education Academy. It's the first created by Dr. Danny, because we realized there's a shortage of educators, of highly qualified educators, and we wanted to bring back our old-school students to work in Baldwin as teachers. So the hope is, once the students complete this pathway, it's aligned with Malloy, so they go through Malloy teaching program, come back, they're still teaching with us, and then hopefully, you know, set up some jobs with us, and to help with our own pipeline, and get the staff that way as well. So we're very excited to see the outcomes of the Education Academy. Alright, so, once again, the drum roll that Kami mentioned before, we're extremely excited to introduce our newest academy, which is our five and four main parts academy. As we've developed these academies, and we look at the coursework, always trying to Uh, as we've developed these academies and we look at the coursework, always trying to find what's going to ignite passion in our students, uh, we want them to be highly motivated. And we have such a wonderful fine, uh, fine performing arts program, so it's time to create an academy, uh, to do your in on their. As we were creating this academy, we learned that really we look at fine and performing arts, there are four areas of concentration. So, um, students, when they come in ninth grade, they will either take an ensemble or art, all right, that's one of their graduation requirements, they have to take one credit. So every ninth grade student will be in one of those two courses and then they can decide whether they want to, you know, remain in this academy and pursue one of these concentration areas. Um, once again, you'll see that each of the academies is indeed with some advanced placement work, college level work. Um, our fine performing arts director, uh, Dr. Philo, he's working with LIU for that college connection and authentic experiences. We're looking to bring in, continue bringing in, um, experts individuals in a particular area to do reductions, to co-conduct our students and to provide meaningful master classes, correct, provide meaningful experiences for them. Uh, so we're extremely excited about this new academy. Um, a new class in this academy is our theater one year class. So we have a great theater arts program, looking to digitalize and releasing a class that really helps them. They're just going to grow and refine skills between acting, dancing, and all those tickets go to line, uh, theater arts. Um, so we're starting theater arts one class and then theater arts two will not be until the following year, we're not 2021, 2022. So it's kind of a roadmap of where we're going with this particular, uh, academy.
So another great connection between academies, if you take a look at the graphic design and marketing course, uh, that course is sort of tracks in the final performance on the academy, but we work very closely with the work of any of the course, um, in the global business academy. So, you know, there's a lot of crossover and it's just the larger fact that they work as teams with other students. So when I'm coming out, if I look at the, they're like, kind of like, they're like, I'm going to go like, hit the look at them and they're running up and down and they're walking together and these two courses, what's going to say, the number example of how, even though we have these academies, there are so many ways to learn that, to let it work a lot of the day.
Uh, so I mentioned as we began the presentation that our academies are focused on three pillars, uh, let's say on internships at Saturdays, rigorous coursework, exhibitions and competitions. Uh, for instance, today, we had several students attend the DNA, uh, learning center with success and actually were using their own saliva and money dealing touchdown. Those are students in the, I believe the medical academy that went on that to do our experience today. Um, so they're out of the building, a lot of that comes expectations that they need to self-directive learners, which is a very critical skill that they need to use later on in life and be successful in college. Numerous competitions, we heard about B B competitions, spark competitions, every year we find numerous awards coming back. Uh, I originally started the list pulling awards, which is too many, so, you know, too many slides, but there are numerous spark challenges that they win, B B competitions they win, um, F D L A competitions that they win, uh, mock child competitions they win. So there are competitions associated with each one of these academies, the clubs associate them to help students with extra productivity, um, part of it.
Another example is, uh, to the law academy, the new course, please, we want to do a some process, contact, these kids, two girls, they change out, they dance, those competitions, they're actually students and some brothers who actually have happened things quite now and they all live together and they're building society, I don't know, they support and they do probably some, I don't know, stuff, so they seem like a team, they're part of that. Um, another thing is, uh, tomorrow, yeah, we have our, uh, book to read, which has purpose to, like, to not tell you how to start that and meet all these partners and workshops and all these companies who throughout this development, people to build, to be successful. Um, tomorrow, I'm just going to see, and they all come, support of students and students are going to see about this student, this structure, this student, you know, like, uh, with little, uh, in Australia, South by, or all these students, they're enjoying the outside time and it's a lot of, it's a room, things like that, and they're really going back as well, being there, and we're really good to see this kind of guy, and thank him for all of his work, and, uh, for the academy.
Just want to show you a, uh, quick, video of the experiences that we're referencing.
And I think everybody can come in, I'm not sure. We can chat like under the question. Again, we're going to have to continue, and we mentioned, we're private sector, um, we're starting a new, and then I do, you know, a lot of good.
So there's a couple more seconds left, but with the idea of the Saturday experience. All right, and our academies, again, is our teacher program, um, and under Dr. Candy's guidance, have made several different news venues, so, um, Channel 12 news, in the Long Island, Long Island, Northwood Health, uh, they're using them, their journal, Metro Focus series, um, and Dr. Candy, in her great work with a, a essay, redefining ready, looking at the different, um, doctors and criteria for students to be successful post high school, but also what does, what should students graduate with? These loose exams, is that the really the all end all? Or we're really looking at those critical skills for students to be successful, like communication, collaboration, and what other criteria? Um, and I believe so hosting, um, and working on a forum, um, to discuss how these have student programs really is what it should be thinking, that it's the more they've done, um, inspires them, and sets up for success, hopefully.
So I think we'll start to, uh, we're going to, um, just to, uh, we're going 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 to, uh, we're going[1329.13]
So this is an excellent presentation. My daughter's in eighth grade, she's taking pre-academies this year, she's doing engineering, the robotics club. She did, so she did, I haven't been home, haven't been home to really, but everyone knows my daughter, she's very, you know, she's selective, so he was like pulling teeth, but she's very excited about joining the medical academy next year. So this is something that, this has been a process and works for many years. I'll just move this way. I'm very excited about how this has gone from ground zero, like now it seems like right, like the penthouse. I have just a few questions. One of the questions I have is, can you speak a little bit to the scheduling and programming of students into the academies? I mean, I just spoke about the pre-academies, which kind of leads them into the high school, but once they're kind of like selected or have signed up for an academy, can you talk about the scheduling?
So Ms. Quan was stated, was at the middle school last Friday, on the sixth, to introduce the academies, did a similar type of presentation to the eighth graders. And why is it suggested to create the application as an online application now, as opposed to traditional written paper? So students have to complete the online application if they're in eighth grade, and once they select their academy, Ms. Quan and I will be meeting Halloween, January, to review the process, they'll receive a letter, acknowledging that they've been accepted as this academy, to create that spark in rotation. Then, as you've noticed on the slide presentation, there are mandatory electives or required electives that a student has to take. So those are mass entered, from the counselor's perspective, for the students' souls, students that want to go to the medical academy, that ninth grade course that they have to take, is all mass entered. The students don't have to worry about selecting it. And to be honest, for ninth graders, there's not much of a room, because they do have to fill a large number of their required graduation courses. So, but as they go through tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, those courses that you saw and read are mass updated, and we just had a conversation about a month ago with the high school team, guidance team, that they just need to put that as in mass for all the students that are in each of those academies, so it's way, there's no mixups. Occasionally, there is a conflict. So for instance, in tenth grade, health is one of the required courses, depending on the student's other coursework, sometimes there's a conflict between health and one of the electives, but there are options. You know, you can take away health for summer, you can take it over to summer, maybe take it the following year, but those sometimes require conversations with the guidance counselor. And then, of course, the other electives they want to take require a conversation with the guidance counselor as well.
But in no way, right, in no way would any, if there's a course or a conflict with a course that they need for graduation, right, it would never take the place of that, but we would be creative and on a case-by-case basis figure out the best, of course, talking to the parent, guidance counselor, and we'll figure out the best course of action.
And just, I mean, I'm gonna yield to my other board members, because I'm sure they have questions, but I just, as a follow-up question, how are students counseled into the academies? My daughter, and she's taken the pre-academies, and I'm sure there's several, I know there's several students who are, but for those students who've not taken the opportunity to be in these pre-academies at the middle school, of course, you're trying, you're looking to try to capture some of those students who have not, you know, had that experience. So tell me, or can you talk to us about how that takes place?
So at the high school, so when I spoke to the students at the middle school, I told them that it's okay if you give an experience pre-academy, because it's still open to everybody. And so when they get to the high school, there's going to be plenty of presentations and information that'll be out there, accessible for our students to be able to even register, even high school students registering for an academy, like they weren't sure in ninth grade, and so now they know that they definitely want to be part of an academy. So the information is always out there, we're constantly updating and giving the information the students know, they could also go on the website and take a look at the academies and do that. So we do a constant talking, that the guidance office or the guidance office also has all the information. And also, sometimes if there's an issue, like even when we're talking to psychologists or social workers, sometimes like putting a student in the academy is part of the solution of whatever's going on, and so all parts, all departments in the high school know what's going on at the academies, and so we continue to promote that.
So one of the things that makes our academies unique, and I think makes it successful, is that it's not a school within a school. If you're in an academy, you are not isolated, you're not isolated from the rest of the school. The academy is designed around the elective system, because that's, that's what we have within our control. So you might be in, for example, EMT with other kids that associate with the academy, but other kids might be in there who just want to take the EMT class. So you are not always traveling with the same kids all day long, every day, because that, that, it's not a cohort. And some, and that's actually positive, because you really want our kids to, you know, free-flow with all the other kids. You know, one of the things that we're trying to do at the state is, we're trying to get them to be a little bit more flexible with graduation requirements, because our kids would far more want to be in, you know, radiology and, if they're in medical, radiology, EMT, you know, seal in court if they're in the law academy, than some of the other courses that might be required by New York State. So, you know, one of the things we've sort of been personally working on is getting the state to really look at graduation requirements, so that it provides more flexibility to create that high level of interest for our kids, you know, you know, couple of microphones, school could be boring, you know?
No!
We're trying to make kids really excited about coming to school, and how do you do that? I mean, certainly you do that by, you know, the way it's taught, but more, you do it in the content and the experiences our kids have. Our kids spend a lot of time outside of school, right? They spend a lot of time in the field. Why, oh, by the way, you cannot quote that. They spend a lot of time outside of school, because, you know, that's where the real world is happening. So I'm learning about radiology, you know, think about how magnified that learning is if I'm spending time with a radiologist, right? We've had as many kids learn what they don't want to do as what they do want to do.
Sure.
Right? So a lot of kids have gone in and said, you know, I really want to be a doctor, and realize they're afraid of blood. You know, not a good profession if you're afraid of blood. You know, and other people have said, I, you know, I really want to be a doctor, and then they, they do shadow days at the hospital, and they realize that nurses spend more time with patients, and that's really what they want to do, spend time with patients. So they shift from wanting to be a doctor to wanting to be a nurse. The other thing that is important to recognize about our academies is, the partnerships are not only with, like Northwell Health and Mercy Hospital and Hofstra Law, it's with, it's with higher ed. So it's the partnership between the college-level courses and the business partnerships, and so they're really getting, if I'm a high school student, I now know what it's like to take college-level courses in this field, I also know what it feels like to be in that field. And so we round out that experience for our kids, so that they really have a really, really solid foundation around what they want to be when they grow up, instead of figuring that out when they're juniors in college and who spent a hundred thousand dollars on tuition.
Just to add, in terms of how we publicize this, something new this year, high school guidance app, which probably is still going on, but passed like two weeks, I've been pushing into English classes to discuss the scheduling process. And they go over a couple of the very unique things that students need to know, and each year takes slightly different information, like SAT, PSAT, but also there is academies, APs, so that's something new that we're doing here at the high schools, to be sure there's a little bit better articulation, students are hearing messages.
No, but I do, but I'm gonna let somebody else ask on the, on the board.
So as far as the medical academy goes, I was just wondering, in Baldwin, we have a very good, very active junior fire department, and, you know, these kids get to train on the ambulances, observe at calls, you know, get familiar with the equipment, and it's really a great program, and it does help educate them and prepare them to become EMTs. So I wonder, you know, if there'd be any way that we could introduce the two of them?
It's funny that you mentioned that, our senior supervisor, the secondary director, Ms. Corrigan, she is talking about building that leadership, especially if we're talking about the EMT course, and so she's actually in the process of working on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great minds, you see that? Great minds.
So they're definitely the popular, or the most used academies, education academies new still, since our second year, so it's still a developing academy, whereas the law government academy, medical academy, trade academy. So sometimes there are teacher changes with the electives, but one of the things we've been discussing at high school, and making sure, is that the ability, the teacher who is in charge of that elective part of that academy remains that teacher. Because they're forming relationships with the partners, with the psychology partnership, or the, you know, the hospital partnership, or the work-related experience, to the point to keep that person there. So the high school only works there math and数学, has to start to ensure that the responsibility of that person remains in that, in that particular academy.
Also, to the application online, it's sort of helping see why and sort of to collect the data in the system, in the knowledge, for the community, in a more comprehensive classroom setting, letting the teachers and making sure that we're all, because there are some students that happen to have a year on the on-year schedule, they're after, they're under the track of, we just need to get this stuff out of the box. So, you know, keeping everything online now, and knowing that the academy's still in the industry, and definitely helps students.
We added some information on the student's profile, like, you school's student management system, so we notice now the academy that they're part of, so anyone who looks up the parent, you say, guys, that's very easy to focus, you see, that Robinson was part of the business academy, you know, that's just right there, so helps some management. And for the patient that came before allowing us to, to this and fill the classroom. Thank you. Last count, which was, I think it was the count of September, the end of the year, it was roughly around 550 students, as a 1500 roughly, so about 45% had admitted to an academy. Easy.
I think the middle school, after the seventh day, I said, okay, there's still a time to, by a number of cards, it's a struggle, so you can try and, definitely try and, and ask them.
So, sorry, swallowed the mic. So to your point about finding a program for every student, can we talk a little bit about, or is there some kind of research that says that there's like a certain amount of recommended academies that a school should offer? Is there, like, you know, like, should it be just aid, or, I mean, I guess I'm just curious to know?
I think we're flying the drone on this one, you know? We're sort of leading this whole thing, and it's being driven by the interests of students, which they, well, it's too bold, it's being interested, driven by the interests of our students, but it's also being driven by the future of work, which is really guiding a lot of what we do. So for example, the introduction, the droning class that we're introducing, which is a college-level course, right? That's, that was one of our problems.
Yeah, we're going to, within Communication Lawn College, they offer droning course, so we like to.
So, so one of the reasons for introducing that is, not only is it sort of a cool thing to do, but that is one of the fields that is exploding out there. And so what we're, we're trying to be very conscious of and cognizant of is making sure that, we want our kids to have fun, and we want them to be excited, we want them to learn, but we also want that excitement and learning to be productive. So what is the future of work? And we've spent a lot of time talking about the future of work, and a lot of our administrative work is around that, and so we're designing these academies and this work around that. So even the Flying Performing Arts Academy, for example, you may, you may not be the performer, right? You may not be the person who is acting, or the person who's playing an instrument, but you can be a lawyer in the performing arts. You can be, you know, work the stage in performing arts, you can be the businessperson in the performing arts. So you may have an affinity for the performing arts, but you may not be the performer, and that is another thing that makes our academies different. You know, we've had kids, for example, in the law government academy, do lots of shadow days at Northwell Health, and what they find out is that there's a whole legal team at Northwell Health, and so they may have an interest in, in the medical field, but they really want to be a lawyer, that they want to be a lawyer in the medical field. So this sort of crossover of the academies is really informative to our kids as well.
I was just gonna ask, could I mention the Spark Challenge? And I don't know if people in the audience are familiar with the Spark Challenge, but if you could briefly talk to us about, or kind of give a, because Dr. Tammy just touched upon it a little bit, but.
So Spark Challenge actually runs through the course of the year, there are different events, and students have to prepare a presentation. So the cul-de-sac event is actually, has been hosted in a changed location, at the Cradle of Nation, last year was at the Crest Hall Country Club, and school districts everywhere participate or can enter the competition, and students are competing and answering an essential question, and they have to prepare high-quality post aboard, presentation, they work in teams, so when we look at the skills, students need to be successful in the world of work, 2030, beyond communication, critical thinking, problem solving, they need to solve a problem presented. And then there are judges, the judges are from these organizations, Northwell Health, and they walk around and they judge the students, and year after year, we have the most entries, some schools go just one entry, we go with eight entries, nine entries, each academy enters typically, and we even, I have begun to allow some of our students' abilities, particularly women that are able to enter the competition, enter as well, which is wonderful, so, and they get prize money, prize money every year, helps students bring home.
And I think we've, we've brought home a couple of dollars, right?
Couple of dollars.
Okay, that's all I have, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm here tonight because I went to the eighth grade, I'm going to the law school, and because we would just walk off, and that's, and I still have a question about students in adage, so if you're telling adage in one of those schools, how does that work with the academy? Or is teaching a class, or teaching an adage, adage academy?
So we consider adage as a pre-academy. You know, adage is during the pre-academy time, and it's created for students to help them focus in, but adage is about determination and self-awareness, consistency, college and career readiness. So students that get an adage would certainly select any of the academies they are considering as their own instinct, and who make it work as their subject, so it's not going to be a roadblock or obstacle. A lot of students are in these pre-academy, adage programs in middle school, there is a one-year adage elective course that high schools would then, because they seem to like mobility to that program, and try to carry it over into high schools for them, to have that elective, which we use every other day, with similar structure at the middle, but it should not interfere with the eligibility of any adage. Okay, good question. So you both say hi, and we see the best project made when the student succeeds with that adage elective into the high school for that freshman year, because that freshman year is a big change this new year, but there's no reason why they cannot be both.
I just thought that the majority would be not in the academy, but a lot of the friends are, and they're great about it, and they're secure, they're a lot of secure adults, but those kids want to do most of that, they want to be here, and I assume that some of them have already gotten accepted, college, taught, in the academy, do happy careers. And I do appreciate that they're starting to explain to the students that they can be in an academy, even though they might not be doctors or a nurse, they could be a lawyer in the medical field, and I think that's really important, because like, my daughter has pneumonia, she might have been in the academy four, four years ago, that's not really the way it needs to be done, so.
So that is a huge competition that happens, you know, by, you know, what, what, you talked about, what if I want to be a doctor, or I want to be a neurologist, or what if I want to be a clinical lawyer? This academy's going to roll in, and like, I go, think about the older passing that you have, think about that passing now, because of the bigger, and the programs, and then you can join a class, or you have a specific, specific on the other side, so it seems like, if I want to go in the law academy, okay, I'm gonna go on FCA, which is a business class, it's very, very active class, and then you go with, yeah, so.
But I think that it's important, you know, to, to have these classes, you know, that you're not, you're not, it's what we're starting to do, we're starting to, we're starting to, for example, we might be in, and they start, and they're just, all the months, and that, and, and a number of courses might be, but we're doing, we're doing, and that's important, and that's important, and that's going to help them, like, you know. Hello, I think, 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 And like, what we kind of hear, I mean, there is the use of the, um, the, the, the.
Two things that I'll mention quickly is that we do not yet have a date, but we will be featured on PBS stations, W N E T, W P B S, W L A W, on a journey to jobs. And as soon as we hear when it's airing, we will let you know. And I'm sure we'll get the clips and we'll also post that. And I was also asked by PBS if we had parents that would be interested in being on Parenting Minutes. And so we had nine elementary parents who were excited to do that. We submitted their names. The folks from PBS interviewed all of them and two of our parents are being, have, um, like one is a 30-second, one is a minute clip that is currently on PBS's website and will be aired on PBS, L A W, and W N E T. Come on, that's awesome.
We thought you had, you were going to cut to more.
I'm sorry, that's it.
You have to drop the mic first.
One is a Lennox parent.
One is a Lennox parent.
Yes. Yes. One is a Lennox parent and one is a Steele parent. And that does not devalue all of the other parents, but you know, they had to make room for people in other states, you know? We were not happy about that, but that's something we can do.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll have comments and questions from the board. I know, oh, actually, we might have put it in other. You want to do that in other?
It's in other.
Okay. Any other comments and questions from the board? I'll start, start on this side. Mr. Smith, if you have comments.
I'm going to try to go in Rochester.
No.
No, not that one. That's in other.
No comments at this time. I'm the newest guy. Oh, I went to, I went to play with, with Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, see, you do have a comment. You have something to report.
I went to the high school production of.
Guys and Dolls.
Fantastic.
It was fantastic.
I yield, my friend. To the, to the diary.
Would you like to sing a little bit? Welcome, Mr. Smith, welcome. Go ahead, Ms. O'Hagan.
Okay, just two things that I, I went to in the past month, and actually, they tie in very nicely with, with what we were just talking about. Um, Dr. Kami refers to redefining ready as, as part of a national movement. And, um, there was a program here on Long Island called Reimagining Readiness. And it's, it's very much the same kind of thing. Taking a look at graduation requirements, taking a look at alternate kinds of assessments, taking a look, a look at curriculum and how it needs to be changed and getting the ideas of educators on, on what we can do about it. And it was very interesting, all day represented, uh, schools were represented from all over Long Island. And then I also attended a Long Island Association meeting, and that is the Business Association of Long Island. And their guest speaker was Roger Tillis, who was our regent. And again, the focus for the business community too was on school to career, school to business, the partnerships that need to happen between K-12, college, or vocational, or whatever, but into the world of business. So it's, it's interesting that that's on everybody's radar and it's, uh, it's being discussed everywhere at this point. It's, it's really a movement. So that's, that's.
That's it. We also went to a Bosse's orientation.
Oh, yeah, we worked on.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. You do have comments.
Well, we'll let you.
No.
Seems like these days are pretty low profile. Um, but I did make it to the musical, Guys and Dolls Musical. It was fabulous. The students, every year, I'll, I'll echo Mr. Press's sentiments. Every year you loo, you, you have students graduate and you wonder, how are these students going to be replaced? And then you have a fresh batch that come up and they're just as good, if not as good, as not better than the group that we left. So we do an amazing job in the fine and performing arts. Um, we have extremely talented students in this district in that discipline. And I'd just like to say also that I, I haven't been able to make some of the presentations, but I was, I was told the presentation last night at the high school with the students coming in, the eighth grade students coming in, a meeting with the high school was very well done. So I want to say, you know, we're doing a great job, I think, uh, doing presentations to inform not only the students that are coming in, but we also have had, um, uh, orientations for stu, uh, parents at the high school. Another way in terms of trying to get the word about what we do here in Baldwin. And I, I just want to compliment all of those people who are involved with that. So thank you.
So I would just like to say, of course, the holiday concerts have begun. And as a board member, I have to say that's probably my favorite part of the entire year. There's just nothing like these faces and, you know, the little ones, and they come in in their outfits and, and some are excited, some are terrified. And it's just the, the most beautiful thing to watch and it, and it really, um, you know, gives you the holiday spirit and is my favorite part of being a board member. It's just incredible.
It is.
This, after, this evening, actually, I was sleeping on the railroad as I usually do. And as I was getting off, a parent wanted me to know that the AP presentation at the high school was extremely helpful and all the other presentations. So that was, it's like, ta, me to tell me. It's like, all right. So that was great to hear. Um, we also went, three of us went to a Bosse's orientation. It was my first time going to learn about the different services that they offer. And we got a tour of the building. So that was also a good experience and informational. And I think that's one that I have as well. All right. Moving along. Okay. Comments and questions from our audience, actually? This is an opportunity for you to ask, um, comments or have any questions that you have. You can go up to the mic. You have three minutes to ask your question and state your name and address. We cannot discuss any personnel items or any questions need to be directed to me and no names of students or administration or staff. All right. Hi, Mia.
My question is about, um, teacher finances and that's a fact now that some students may be starting elementary in Long Island middle school. My son is 11 years old and since he was 10, he's been asking me about taxes and his rights. So I'm asking whether it is in the high school or either elementary school, um, the children, as they, or who likes to learn about those things.
Do you want to be the answer? Yes. So it, you know, that's, that really just ties in with what we've been talking about with, um, the changes that we've been talking about to the state. The, at the high school, there's economics classes, participation in government classes, which are both required classes for graduation. Um, through the business office, the business department, there's personal finance courses and, and certainly things like that. Um, so, so that does exist. Um, you know, some of the conversations that we're having across the state are, you know, and, and in full disclosure, I'm not a fan of creating new discrete courses. You can probably tell that from the kind of, you know, courses we have at the academies. But, you know, this, um, there's a lot of conversation around the topic of personal finance, civics, media literacy. Um, and so I think that you're going to see some changes coming, but I think we're pretty well equipped. Um, it is through the elective process, though. The two required courses are economics and participation in government. Um, but there's certainly plenty of opportunities at the high school level to learn those subject areas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mafan Adamov and I reside at 1411 Lockwood Street. Uh, my question relates to the social emotional, the social emotional component that's missing at the middle school. I couldn't help but note that I love the prerequisite for many of the academies was mindfulness. And I know that mindfulness has been incorporated in the high school, not at the high school, yes, at the high school level and also at the elementary level. And I'm just a little concerned that there's not a holistic approach being taken in terms of educating our children, particularly out of the young black male. That's my, you know, mother of two blacks. And I'm just a little concerned about the social emotional piece that is lacking at the middle school. I'm just wondering whether initiatives I make for employees to ensure that, that social emotional piece is able to be incorporated.
You want to take that, Mr. Minhao? Okay.
So, um, Dean McKenzie did go last summer to, um, restart his practice workshops as well as, um, other programs to try to start bringing those into the school, peer mediation, things of nature. So we are looking at various different programs to bring in. Um, one of the other ways of enhancing social emotional learning at the middle school, we find works really well through collaborative exercises. Um, so with our Battle World Day work that's going on, um, the eighth grade students tomorrow going to the creation, they're working in partnerships. And part of those protocols require students to be respectful, learn to collaborate, communicate. Um, so one of the things that we've been, because the day is only so many hours, the middle school's been focusing on using these various collaborative protocols, discussion protocols, learning protocols, to infuse the social emotional learning within there. Um, so we want our students to be able to learn the proper techniques to communicate with each other, um, behave when they're out in these learning expeditions, et cetera. Um, so those are the mechanisms right now, um, that we're using.
Um, just going down in terms of discipline, um, has there ever been, and I'm, I'm used to the district, so I'm asking you all these questions. Um, exploration in terms of changing disciplinary tactics. Um, for example, rather than constantly using communicative tactics, just digging deeper and asking why students aren't giving the things that they deserve. There's always an underlying issue. And, you know, digging deep and giving students an opportunity to express themselves, giving them an opportunity when they're having difficulties in class, when they're having emotional outbursts, you know, to really process their emotions. Um, I think middle school students should benefit from that because it's, it's a skill and it's part of taking a holistic approach to educating the whole child, you know, through these. So I'm just curious, you know, you know, whether it's possible. And I know, you know, with funding, we're talking about foreign money into mindfulness program, where students are going to meditate or students are going to deal with those, those layers of emotions that they're dealing with at the middle school, both biologically, you know, and, and otherwise, it's quantitative development. I'm just curious, you know, what anything can be done in that aspect.
So, um, you, you are a hundred percent right. I mean, the middle school age is just a tough age. It, it doesn't matter who you are, all right? So you're not, you're not a child anymore, you're not an adult yet, you're kind of stuck somewhere in the middle and you're trying to figure out who it is you are. Um, I can tell you that the philosophy in the district is not one of being punitive, um, but one of figuring out what's going on. Um, we come from a path of empathy. Um, and so, for example, you know, if somebody does something that is wrong, not dangerous, not harming someone else, I'm going to put that in a category all, um, all its own. Um, you know, kids make mistakes. Um, the idea is that they learn from those mistakes. And so a lot of what we put into place are, uh, are from the position of empathy, um, doing community service work, um, working together. Sorry, my time's up. I'm kidding. Um, working, uh, working together, um, and, and counseling. Uh, because we really do believe that, uh, you need to figure out what's going on and fix it, not punish you for it. So that is absolutely the philosophy.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Welcome, by the way.
Yes, welcome. Welcome to the district. Okay. Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report for December 11th, December 11th, 2019, board meeting as detailed in the Friday mailing as amended. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Due to the confidentiality, this will not be discussed in public. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Ed, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, sub-CFC 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education in September, October, and November 2019 as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Coles.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Again, this cannot be discussed in public due to the confidentiality of this report. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Zareska. Again, this cannot be discussed in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation in the amount of $30,000 from the Herman Auerbach Memorial Trust Fund to be used to support professional development, curriculum enrichment, and innovative programming in Baldwin schools as approved by the Superintendent of Schools as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Um, any questions?
I can have a question.
Go ahead.
So for as long as I've been on the board, I'm now in my fourth year, uh, this has come up every year and, and it's a wonderful gift. How does this work? Is it something we apply for every year? Or is there a limit on, at, at some point, we can't receive it anymore?
VIP service by, uh, Dr. Kim.
Um, so it, it, we do not apply for it and there is, um, the only limit is, um, there's a certain amount, a total amount per year. Um, and, um, it will continue to flow as long as she's here in this election.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you for the relationship. And thank you for this donation.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board of Education accepts with thanks from Baldwin Foundation for Education for 2019, 2020 school year, $603,077 for the mini grant program and authorizes a budget increase of $603,077 in expenditures and an increase of $603,077 in revenues. This, I'm reading it out loud in it. Okay. Grant titled two kinetic sand sessions, Baldwin High School at Schubert, $80. E N L in reading vox box, first grade metal school, $399.50. AP art and design drawing portfolio class at the senior high school, $124.27. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Um, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation in the amount of $500 from the Bethpage Care Channel Giving Program of Bethpage Federal Credit Union to support the annual mentor mentee breakfast at Baldwin High School as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Same.
Moved by Mrs. Coles.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions?
I, I did, just one. Who applies for this? Is this applied for, um?
At the high school. At the high school. Were you asking Kat?
Yeah, was it Pat?
Yeah, he is, well, that's what it said on the letter.
Okay, sorry.
That's what it was given to.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of a buddy flute from Mrs. Kristen Hamilton to be used in the music program at middle school as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved by Mrs. O'Hagan. Seconded by Ms. Reed. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Lots of thank yous. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of a ping pong table with accessories from an anonymous donor to be used in the district's physical education department as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by, oh, Mrs. Coles. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board of Education, uh, as board president, I'm calling for consideration of the business items in tonight's agenda as consent items. This includes business items six through 16, business agreements, special service contracts, and obsolete items. Are there any items? Are there any items members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Item six through 16. All good? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda including business item six through 16?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve item six through 16?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cool, seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities report from July 2018 through Ju... That's 19, it should be 19. July 2019 through June 2020. As detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Calendar. The Board of Education approves the calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year. All those, can I get a motion? Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any questions on this?
Question? Was there a copy in the packet?
There was one in my, do you have a digital? I have, I had one in a digital packet.
I'm gonna take that.
Oh.
We should have been, yeah.
Did you get one?
Yeah, I'm sure I did. Yeah. Do you want it? It's all right.
Here, if you want to take a quick glance. That's what it looks like.
So that's what it looks like. You might have to realize.
Okay. And we can just resend it to you just to make sure you have it. Any questions on this? Only thing is, the digital version is hard. So is it, yeah, see, the gray, isn't it supposed to cover all school, all of these dates that are closed?
Superdans conference day.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't show. The digital, no, the gray.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It just looks, I don't know why on the digital one it doesn't show at all. But that's okay. As long as it's written down here.
And that'll be posted in the next couple of days.
Yeah, so that everyone will know the first day of school, which is?
That'll be posted in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Share internally first.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so it'll be posted in the next couple of days, like 20, 20, 20, 21 calendar. All right, can I get a, it was moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Coles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education herewith approves the settlement of litigation commenced by a former employee of Baldwin Union Free School District and approves of the settlement agreement and general release dated December 11th, 2019. Said settlement agreement and general release was reviewed by the Board of Education in executive session. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education herewith authorizes the district's superintendent to execute said settlement agreement and general release on behalf of the district. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mrs. Coles. Oh, Reed. Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Policies. The Board of Education has a first read on the following policies as detailed in the previous Friday mailing. Policy 8115, pesticides and pest management. Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following policies as detailed in a previous Friday mailing. Policy 8332, use of district-owned cell phones. Policy 9240, recruiting and hiring. Moved by Mrs. Coles.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions on the second read? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Others. Nisbah reports. So we went to the New York State School Boards Association Conference back in October and we were all going to just give a quick blurb on our experience or any sessions that we attended. So I can start, Mr. Smith, are you okay with me? I'll start with Mrs. O'Hagan. I'll start with Mrs. O'Hagan.
Okay.
So he doesn't say he's the first.
Okay, I attended several workshops. The first of them was Understanding School Finance, which, I don't know that I came away understanding school finance, but in any case, it was on foundation aid, which is a great topic of conversation at the moment because the legislature is going to be working on the foundation formula, or hopefully will be working on the foundation formula. So part of what they were talking about was that there is an opportunity here to create a more equitable system. We have been complaining about that since the formula was put into effect many years ago. And they talked about lobbying regarding the barriers to equity, which have to do with the shares and outdated data that's used. One of the things that they use is free and reduced price lunch to calculate positivity. And they use very outdated numbers to make those calculations. So unfortunately, they're not reflective of district's current status. There, I attended two workshops on social media. One was better than the other in the sense that it was more practical information and the emphasis was on using the right tool for the situation that you are using it for, what you use to engage a community as opposed to what you use simply to inform the community, talking about things like posting snow days and that sort of thing. Our keynote speaker was Robert Duffy and he spoke again about the necessity of schools partnering with the business community and trying to get a much better articulation between what is being taught and the job opportunities that are out there. And then, last but not least, I went to a very interesting workshop on building an equity framework. And the speaker was an assistant superintendent in the Albany School District. And they have done a great deal of work on attempting to create a more equitable educational opportunity for their students. I think, having been around for a while, my question is, how did you get the money to do that? How do you go about doing it? And it was the unfortunate result of the fact that they, their results were so poor on standardized tests that they were eligible for a very, very large grant. And that was what enabled them to get going and do a lot of the good work that they did. And it's, I guess we all feel it's unfortunate that it has to come to that, that that's the way, you know, these things get funded. But anyway, very interesting, informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
So I went to Rochester with my fellow trustees for my first New York State School Boards Convention. It was an excellent experience. Got to meet a lot of other school board trustees from all around the state. It's a very interesting, is diverse the right word? And it's not about race, it's just about different kinds of people in the state and different kinds of communities. I was at a presentation on a small community who talked about how they went through doing a bond like we are talking about doing here. I was at a presentation on renewable energy and how schools are using that. Seems to be something that works much better upstate where the school districts have tons of free acres around their buildings, which we don't have. But there is some discussion about how it can be done when buildings get your roots and that's something that we may be doing soon. We have another presentation on cybersecurity threat, big issue now with, with school districts. And our neighboring school district, Rocky Center, was hit a few months ago. And it's, it's a very serious issue. As Mary Jo said, great keynote presentation and kudos to the Freeport Select Parrot. I'm sure our singers are very good too, but they really wanted to have to go to Rochester and the same fall, so they were really excellent.
They were.
Dr. Kami came and presented on Reddy, and made us all proud of her.
As always.
She's our superintendent. Everybody was running up to ask her questions afterwards, so they're kind of like, yeah, she talks a lot. I also went to the school finance presentation with Mary Donors. A lot to learn, it's so complicated in the state. And overall, excellent educational experience.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Reed?
So there was, I kind of read, was at several of the same sessions that my colleagues were. We attended the Reddy, Redefining Reddy workshop and again, yes, kudos to Dr. Kami, made us all proud. Mrs. Coles and I attended a workshop on homework and there was a district that they were talking about the significance of homework and trying to make sure that the homework that's going home to students is more meaningful. I left there thinking, okay, not to be rude, but I think it's kind of just common sense at this point. Why are we giving homework for homework's sake if we're doing that? But it was just kind of, I guess, an affirmation that we're doing things right here in Baldwin. Also went to a session at the end of my first day where there were several panels in education discussing issues such as, current issues in education such as immigration, vaping, a whole host of, and it was, I don't, I think we were all in the room in agreement of, we need to do, we need to address these things and make sure that we're advocating for our students in a positive way to address some of these things that are happening currently. And I think that, oh, and there was another session that I attended where there was a panel of students who spoke about the minorities' experience in Long Island schools. And it was very interesting to kind of hear some of the things that the students were presenting, some, you know, spoke about the fact that they maybe one or a few minorities in the schools that they're attending. And sometimes, a lot of times feeling like they're not being held to the same standards, even in 2019, that they're not being held to the standards by which that they could succeed. So some of the things are not, they're not counseled into going into classes that, that, you know, that would maximize their abilities. I mean, we have very smart students and they're still in 2019, not being encouraged to go into things that would help them. Again, being there and I'm thinking, thank God I'm in Baldwin because we are getting it right. So that's pretty much all I have to report.
Thank you. Mrs. Coles?
So I had gone up earlier than my other board members to attend the law seminar, which was a very interesting experience. The morning was spent talking about crisis management, safety and crisis management from a legal perspective versus a PR perspective. And very, very interesting to hear the different sides of that. The afternoon in the law seminar was spent talking about new laws and regulations, things such as the immunization law that we were faced with with the start of school this year and listening to many different case studies that districts are faced with, very interesting information. And then, as Mrs. Reed spoke about, the class, A New Look at Homework. It's very interesting when you go to these things to hear presentations and, and opinions and stories from people that come from very different districts. So this district presenting had, had an interesting way of looking at it. One thing they do is they don't call it homework, they call it home learning. And this particular district had done away with reading logs. They say that research says that they can destroy a child's love of learning. I know that not everybody would agree with that, but this was their presentation. And they, they believe in pushing authentic activities as opposed to busy bookwork, which unfortunately does happen in some districts, not ours, but some districts. And...
What's busy bookwork? You said busy bookwork?
Yes, so, so they are pushing, working on authentic activities as opposed to just kids being busy with homework. Instead of actual activities. So another good seminar that I attended was called Passport for Good Community Engagement. And this, this was very, very interesting. They said that 44% of kids on free or reduced lunches are not engaged in any activities or clubs. Students who feel noticed are more likely to participate in these things and students who don't feel noticed do not participate. So the presenters of this seminar actually have a software product, right? Which is, is typical with conventions. But this particular product is to register kids going into high school and follow them, gauge them all throughout their four years of high school to, to gauge if they are, you know, doing actual volunteer work as opposed to being forced to do it for credit. They're saying that student engagement for all high school years can be transposed through this software to college applications. And I think that would make a lot of people's lives easier. But required versus truly volunteer is, is very, very important and needs to be looked at because civic readiness and meaningful service to the communities is going to become much more looked at by colleges and employers. And it was, as I said, very interesting and I think a very important subject matter. So I definitely learned a lot in Rochester. It was a great experience.
Great, thank you. I went to pretty much a lot of what we all just discussed. For me, the cybersecurity stood out the most. They talked about IT security is predicted to reach 124 billion in spending in 2019. And ransomware is very active in a lot of the schools as Mr. Smith just mentioned. So there's a lot of just discussions of various cyber attacks in a lot of school districts and how it's expanding, but then there's a lot of investment being spent. There are also companies that are developed because of this to help negotiate ransomware. So it's, it's crazy. It's like now, it's like a business, a job for, yeah, expanding jobs. Dr. Kami, as we all just mentioned, presented on Redefining Reddy. I love to hear this presentation over and over again. I think everyone should at least hear her present this once because it's extremely well presented. That was actually my favorite, of course. Understanding School Finance, I go to this session every single conference to hope I learn a little bit more and it's actually starting to make sense. I definitely feel like a student. Yeah, it's starting to make sense. Every time I feel like I'm a student, I'm trying to learn more. They mentioned how 398 districts are underfunded totaling $3.41 billion. So again, talking about equity, but it, it actually start, the picture's starting to make a little bit more sense. There was a board roundtable where board members talk about their various experiences and situations as board members. And this just lets me know that we have a sane board because the stories that they tell, I just sit with amazement that, wow, yeah. It would not be worth it at the point that they're, the stories that they mention, it's really sad. So we have a great board that I was come out saying, thank goodness I have a great team that I work with. And the other last one was creating a culture of equity. This was presented by the superintendent of East Ramapo. So she talked about like her vision to improve student success and I think her story was great, but I didn't feel like it related to us. Sometimes when these districts present their story, you're hoping to get something out of it, but they really don't go through it. They just talk about how great it was, not their process. So for me, that part lacked in terms of what I was trying to get out of it. And that's all that I have. All right. Anything else under others? Okay, I'll go through some important dates. As Ms. Coles mentioned, there's a lot of winter concerts, a lot of cute faces and great performances happening. Brookside's performing tomorrow at 9:30 and 1:30 Meadows Performance, Winter Concert is tomorrow also at 9 o'clock and 1:30. Concerned Parents of Baldwin has their meeting at the high school on the 16th at 7:00 PM. The winter concert at the high school is also on the 16th at 7:30. We have Lennox has their winter concert on Tuesday, 17th at 9:00 AM and 1:30. I know I'll be there at the 9:00 AM. The middle school, grade six, is also on the 17th at 7:30. Steel has their concert at 9 o'clock on the 18th and also at 1:30. And the high school has their Winter Two concert on the 19th at 7:30. Will be closed for holiday recess Monday, December 23rd through Wednesday, January 1st. 1st. Our next Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, January 8th at 8:00 PM at Plaza. Hope you all have a happy holiday, enjoy time with your family, have a happy new year. Feels good, weird saying that so early, but we won't see you guys for a while. See you next year. Thank you for your time this evening and again, thank you for the presentation. On that note, can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting at 9:59? Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. Motion, um, vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.